Will everyone please stand with the invocation given by Reverend Ken Johnson, Executive Director, Road Haver Boris Range.
Reverend Johnson here. Don't you ask someone else to give the invocation. Commissioner Norwood, you give the invocation.
Will Commissioner Norwood please render us our invocation?
Goodness Reverend, thank you. Most gracious and everlasting God, that heavenly Father, we thank you, oh God, for the opportunity, oh God, that you've set forth. We thank you for these young people, oh God, that is representing this commission tonight. Bless them, oh Father, with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. And then, Father, we ask that you bless the parents of these students so far, and bless these students that are here, oh God, so that they might receive their reward also. And then, Father, we pray, oh God, that you allow us in all that we do to honor you and to bring glory to you. And for the deliberations that we're gonna have tonight, we ask that you will bless us, grant us wisdom, knowledge, and most of all, give us understanding. We ask these things in Jesus' name, and for his sake, we do pray. Amen.
Will Commissioner Angelique Brown please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Would you please start and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Clerk, will you please call the robe?
Mayor Joshua Williams.
Present.
Vice Mayor Savannah Ranger.
Present.
Commissioner Brittany Stanley.
Present.
Commissioner Angelique Brown.
Present.
Commissioner Demi McClung.
Present.
All members of the student and government are present and accounted for.
Thank you. We have a quorum with, um, you may be seated. Vice Mayor Ranger, please join me at the podium, along with Ms. Miller and Ms. Baird. We, the members of the Honorary Student City Council, would like to read this proclamation recognizing October 19th through the 25th as City Government Week.
Whereas, City Government is the government closest to most citizens and the one with most direct daily impact upon its residents, and whereas, City Government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities, and whereas, City Government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their beliefs, and whereas, Florida City Government Week is a very important time to recognize the important role played by a city government in our lives, and whereas, during Florida City Government Week, the city of Palatka has joined with the Florida League of Cities and its member cities to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects and information, and whereas, Florida City Government Week offers an important opportunity to spread the word to all citizens of Florida that through their civic involvement, they can shape and influence this branch of government which is closest to the people.
Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Palatka Students and Government Council of the City of Palatka, as follows. Section one, that the members of the Palatka Student Council and Government do encourage all citizens, schools, City Government officials, and employees to do everything possible to ensure that this week is recognized and celebrated accordingly. Section two, that the members of the Palatka Students and Government Council do encourage educational partnerships between City Government and schools. Section three, that the city of Palatka and the Palatka Students and Government Council do support and encourage all City Governments to actively promote and sponsor the Florida City Government Week, October 19th through the 25th, 2014, Palatka Students and Government Council.
We just wanna take this opportunity to thank Palatka City Council for allowing our students to come and participate in this great activity. It has been honored, and I think they've truly enjoyed this experience, and they've enjoyed it as well?
Yeah.
I would now entertain any motions.
I have a motion. I would like to set forth a self-defense class provided to the students, all students.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor to set forth a self-defense class available to all students after school, made by Commissioner Ranger. Second, by Commissioner Stanley. Is there any discussion?
How would you, how would you accommodate, like, where would you have this event?
Um, I believe that using the PHS gym or the weightlifting facilities would be sufficient.
Is there any other discussion?
Have you contacted anyone to supervise this?
Um, I plan to meet with the Chief of Police later on in the week to discuss any further disclosure about this event.
Any more discussion?
We, we provide, could we provide a safe haven for teenagers once a month for activities after school?
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this motion pass. Does anyone else, excuse me, any other motions?
I motion that we provide a safe haven for teenagers once a month for after-school activities.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor to, that we provide, once a month, a safe haven for activities after school, made by Commissioner Angelique Brown, seconded by Commissioner Stanley. Is there any discussion?
Angelique, where would this event take place?
Um, I propose that we ask Calvary Missionary Baptist Church to use their family license free of charge.
Any other?
Angelique, I feel the security would be an issue with such a large crowd. How would you regulate it?
Um, I would, we, we would approach the schools to ask what they provide, volunteers and teachers, and we could also use staffs from the church if they would willingly volunteer. And to keep it in check, we would ask that the students that would like to come out, um, would they bring their student ID? If they don't have an ID, they can't get in, only to control the population inside and outside, because we don't want any people who shouldn't be there to be there.
Is there any more discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this motion pass. This concludes the items on the special agenda. As there is no further business to conduct, I hereby adjourn this meeting of the Palatka High Student, Palatka High School Students and Government. Mayor Myers. Mayor Myers, I am ready to relinquish the gap. She's there.
We'll call the meeting to order, the City of Palatka City Commission Meeting of October 23rd, 2014. Uh, we have had an invocation and we have had a pledge of allegiance. At this time, Madam Clerk, I ask that you call the robe.
Mayor Myers.
Present.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Present.
Commissioner Kitchens, here. Commissioner Larry.
Here.
Commissioner Norwood.
Present.
All members are present.
We have a quorum. We'll call the meeting to order. Commissioners, you received copies of the minutes of September the 9th, 2014. What is your pledge? There's a motion for approval by Commissioner Norwood, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion?
Question?
Questions been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign. The minutes stand approved. We're now in the Public Recognition Presentation section of the agenda. Our first item after that performance by our students, uh, that exceptional performance, is a proclamation having to do with Florida City Government Week. City Palatka Proclamation. Whereas, City Government is closest to most citizens and the one with the most daily direct impact upon its residents, and whereas, City Government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities, and whereas, City Government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public service and their benefits, and whereas, Florida City Government Week is a very important time to recognize the important role played by City Government in our lives, and whereas, during Florida City Government Week, the city of Palatka had joined with the Florida League of Cities and its member cities to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects and information, and whereas, Florida City Government Week offers an important opportunity to spread the word to all citizens of Florida that through their civic involvement, they can shape and influence this branch of government which is closest to the people. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the City Commission of the City of Palatka, Florida, as follows. Section one, that the city of Palatka does encourage all citizens, City Government officials and employees to do everything possible to ensure that this week is recognized and celebrated accordingly. Section two, that the city of Palatka does encourage educational partnerships between City Government and schools, and section three, that the city of Palatka does support and encourage all City Governments to actively promote and sponsor Florida City Government Week which is being celebrated in Palatka, Florida during the week of October the 19th through the 25th, 2014. City Palatka, Vernon Myers, Mayor, Commissioners Mary Lawson, Brown, Alager, Kitchen, Phil Leary, and James Norwood, Jr. And I would ask that our students come forward, please. Will our students come forward, please? No, not, no, just students, our City Commission students. We'll get to the other students. So those of you who are here, these were our representatives for the City of Palatka Student Government Week. City Palatka Proclamation. Whereas, the education of our youth is important to the future of our city, state, and nation, and whereas, teaching students to be involved and knowledgeable about local government is something we should always strive to be doing, and whereas, students from Palatka High School learned about local government today from city and officials as part of Palatka City Government Week activities, and whereas, these students have contributed positively to our community and local government, whereas, and whereas, the teachers who encourage their students to be a part of this day are to be commended, and whereas, we wish to honor the students, teachers, and City Government officials and staff who participated in this day. Now, therefore, I Vernon Myers, Mayor of the City of Palatka, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby proclaim Friday, the 24th day of October 2014, to be Palatka High School Students and Government Day in the City of Palatka. I hope all citizens will join me in showing our gratefulness and appreciation to the students, educators, and officials who were involved, and witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Palatka to be affixed this 23rd day of October 2014. Would our sponsors please stand also out there and be recognized? And that's Caitlin Miller and Bev Baird. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. And I would like to present these good citizenship, good citizenship awards to Mr. Joshua Williams, honorary City official, Brittany Stanley. Brittany, thank you so much. Angelique Brown. Angelique. Demi. McClung. And Savannah Ranger, and they did an excellent job. Thank you very much. City Palatka Proclamation. I would like Allison Strother, uh, Strother of the Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Network, please come forward. Welcome, Miss Strother. Please stand right there and face the audience if you will. City Palatka Proclamation. Whereas, in 2014, an estimated 46,420 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 39,590 will die from the disease, and approximately 2,890 deaths will occur in Florida in 2014. Pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 6%. And whereas, when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally late stage, and 73% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, and 94% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. And whereas, the Retalcitrant Cancer Research Act was signed into law in 2013, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop a scientific framework or strategic plans for pancreatic cancer and other deadly cancers, which will help provide the strategic direction and guidance needed to make true progress against these diseases. And whereas, the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is a national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in the City of Palatka and nationwide through a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. Whereas, the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in the City of Palatka support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer as well as those to, as well as to those who have lost their lives to the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure. Whereas, the good health and well-being of the residents of the City of Palatka are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness against pancreatic cancer, and research into early detection causes and effective treatments. Now, therefore, I Vernon Myers, Mayor of the City of Palatka, Florida, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby recognize and endorse and designate the month of November 2014 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Palatka, and hereby encourage the citizens of Palatka to observe the month by contacting the Putnam County Health Department to inquire about pancreatic cancer screening programs available locally as well as any other information regarding the prevention and control of colorectal cancer. Pancreatic cancer, I believe, that's. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused to be affixed the seal of the City of Palatka, Florida on this 23rd day of October in the year of our Lord 2000, Vernon Myers, Mayor, Commissioners Mary Lawson, Brown, Alager, Kitchen, Phil Leary, and James Norwood, Jr.
Hi, I would just like to thank the Mayor and the City Council for recognizing the Members Pancreatic Cancer Month. Um, I lost my dad's pancreatic cancer about two years ago. He was 60 years old. He was, uh, given three to six months. He fought for a year, but in order to beat this disease, we need to raise awareness so that we can, um, develop more early screening detection tools and more treatment. So, thank you very much.
Susan Lane with Hanes and Hospice.
I'm filling in.
That's okay. Deborah Strick. Thanks for joining us, Deborah. City Palatka Proclamation. Whereas, hospice and palliative care empower people to live as fully as possible, surrounded and supported by family and loved ones despite serious and life-limiting illness, and whereas, through pain management and symptom control, caregiver training and assistance, and emotional and spiritual support, allowing patients to live fully and make more meaningful moments, surrounded and supported by their loved ones, friends, and committed caregivers. Whereas, every year, more than 1.5 million Americans living with life-limiting illness and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs in communities throughout the United States, and whereas, more than 400,000 trained volunteers contribute more than 19 million hours of service. To hospice programs annually. And whereas, Haven Hospice believes that everyone deserves comfort, care, and compassion. In 2013, Haven had the privilege to serve over 9,000 individuals and families throughout their 18-county service area. Haven is honored to provide a quality of care that maximizes the quality of life for each individual served. Now, therefore, I Vernon Myers, Mayor of the City of Palatka, Florida, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby endorse and proclaim November 2014 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Awareness Month in the City of Palatka, and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life, and to observe this month with appropriate activities and programs. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused to be affixed the seal of the City of Palatka, Florida, on this 23rd day of October in the year of our Lord 2014, Vernon Myers, Mayor, Commissioners Mary Lawson, Brown, Alager, Kitchen, Phil Leary, and James Norwood, Jr.
I'm very proud to represent Haven Hospice and wanna say thank you to the City of Palatka as well as the community for the support you've provided us for the last 30 years. It's been our honor and privilege to serve you and your families, uh, the comfort, care, and compassion that folks need at the end of life. Because of the support of this city and this community, we have the wonderful Saddle White Campus for Care and Compassion and Roberts Care Center, an 18-bed inpatient facility. So thank you for helping us raise awareness of end-of-life care and the trust that you've given us over the years. Thank you.
So, now, we've come to the time we've all been waiting for, the student of the month. Would, uh, Commissioner Kitchens, please come down with me, please? The outstanding youth being recognized here tonight exemplify many of the traits we all desire in our children. They're being recognized by their teachers, schools, and community for the traits of scholarship, leadership, social skills, which they have so aptly exhibited. These qualities are inherent in our young leaders here tonight, and we urge our honorees to continue on the same road as they will find that these attributes will lead to continued success in the future. These outstanding young people represent the very best of our students of the day, and we fully expect that those being recognized tonight will achieve greater accomplishments in the future. Would you please come forward as I call your name, along with your sponsor? Isabella Westbury. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Isabella Westbury is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at the Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, given this 23rd day of October 2014. Congratulations. Kirsten Peters. Can we have a representative from Palatka Edge High School? Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka, City Commission. This is to certify that Kirsten Peters is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at the Putnam Edge High School, given this 23rd day of October 2014. Chanel Randolph. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Chanel Randolph is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at Browning Pierce Elementary School, given this 23rd day of October 2014. Congratulations. Brooklyn Martin. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Brooklyn Martin is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at C.L. Overdurf, Jr., 6th Grade Center, given this 23rd day of October 2014. Congratulations. Mackenzie Thomas. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Mackenzie Thomas is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at Children's Reading Center Charter School, given this 23rd day of October 2014. Congratulations. Alexia Roberts. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Alexia Roberts is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at E.H. Miller Schools, given this 23rd day of October 2014. Congratulations. Jada Aaron. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Jada Aaron is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at James A. Long Elementary School, given this 23rd day of October 2014. Congratulations. Chandon Andrews. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Chandon Andrews is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at Jenkins Middle School, given this 23rd day of October 2014. Congratulations. Ella Claire Landberger. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Ella Claire Landberger is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at Kelly Smith Elementary School, given this 23rd day of October 2014. Congratulations. Bailey Center. Who happens to be our Assistant City Clerk's granddaughter. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify- This is to certify that Bailey Penner is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at Kelly Smith Elementary School, given this 20... And this is for September, given this 25th day of September 2014, and you couldn't make it last month. Congratulations. Diana Ramos. We have a representative from Mellon Elementary School. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Diana Ramos is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at Mellon Elementary School, given this 23rd day of October 2014. Congratulations. Marquise Wilson. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Marquise Wilson is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at Mosley Elementary School, given this 23rd day of October 2014. Congratulations. Stephen Singleton. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Stephen Singleton is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at Palatka High School, given this 23rd day of October 2014. Congratulations. Emily Beck. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Emily Beck is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at Fennell Baptist Academy, given this 23rd day of October 2014. Your City Commission recognizes and salutes these outstanding students, and we want each of you to know, each of you, to know that we are counting on you to continue on this path. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in recognizing our award. I'm sure that honorees will agree that they did not accomplish this honor alone. We join them in recognizing the parents and caregivers, the people who provide the loving care and guidance necessary to nurture a child and give them direction. In this modern world in which we live, we all know what an important role we as parents play in our children's lives. The fact that your child is being recognized tonight is testament to your positive influence in their formative years. We know that you will keep up the good work in spite of the challenges for your child's sake. And last but not least, we want to pay tribute to our teachers and administrators for their hard work and dedicated service in the educational industry. Your effort makes the City of Palatka and Putnam County a better place for all of us. At this time, I'd like for the children to stay up here. We're going to take a group picture, and then we will be taking into the conference. Okay, meeting back to order. We're on the public comment section of our agenda. Item 2, we have anyone in attendance is invited to address the meeting. Hello? Excuse me. Anyone in attendance is invited to address the meeting. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less, and it's unreasonable to expect any action to be taken on any item unless it's on the agenda. In the public comment section. Close the public comment section. Item 3 is a consent agenda. Item 3A is adopt resolution number 2014-10-126, amending the fiscal year 2014-15 tax increment fund budget. Item 3B is to adopt resolution 2014-10-127, requesting a waiver and permit fee from St. John's River Water Management District for fiscal year 2014-15. Item 3C is adopt resolution number 2014-10-128, authorizing the execution of a scope and service agreement with heirs, associates, in the amount of $28,050 to complete the FDEP operating permit renewal application for the City of Palatka wastewater treatment plant. Item 3D is adopt resolution number 2014-10-129, supporting the Palatka Housing Authority's application for a Florida special category grant for replacement of the historic Central Academy roof. Item 3E is adopt resolution number 214-10-130, authorizing the execution of a CDVG grant contract number 15DB-0OJ-04-64-02-C04 in the amount of $750,000 for our fiscal year 2013 commercial revitalization grant contract for river park, riverfront park improvements. Item 3F, adopt resolution number 2014-10-131, authorizing submission of an application for the Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program, Firdapp, to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection in the amount of $50,000 for federal fiscal year 2015-16 Riverfront Park Phase 1. Item 3G, adopt resolution number 2014-10-132, authorizing the submission of an application for the Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program, Firdapp, to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection in the amount of $200,000 for federal fiscal year 2015-16 Riverfront Park Phase 2.
Mr. Mayor, could we just pull F and G for a brief discussion?
Commissioners, we're going to pull F and G, or any other items that need to be pulled for discussion.
There's one that was added. It's for H. It's not equal, it's...
Okay, and we have item H, its grant permission to exceed allowable noise levels and to close the 900 block of St. John's Avenue for the Fourth Saturday Cruisin', October 25th, 2014, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m., Mr. Charles Rudd, Palatka, Main Street. Any items need to be pulled other than previously discussed F and G?
Move approval of A through E and H.
There's a motion for approval of A through E and H by Commissioner Leary, second by Commissioner Norwood. Is there any discussion? Question been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. Consent agenda stands approved with the exception of the items discussed. So we'll go to commit... City Manager wanted to discuss F and G.
Yes, sir. This is two grant applications that we've applied for the last few years. Mr. Griffith, if you could come up here just briefly. At least one commissioner asked the placement, or the proposed placement, of each of the features contained in both of those grant applications. So I know Mr. Griffith has reviewed this in the past, but just for the commission's understanding of the potential grant application, Mr. Griffith could go through those components, and then just give a brief recap of what was funded this year in that cycle.
Yes, sir. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to stand here so I can point at the screen.
Certainly.
Jonathan Griffith, Project Manager, 2011, 7th Street. You have two applications in front of you. The one is for a $50,000 Firdapp grant, and one is for a $200,000 Firdapp grant. We are submitting 50 and 200 because last year, we submitted two 200s, and were ranked fourth and fifth, and they only funded the $50,000 grants. So we're trying to improve our chances this year. I will go over some of the major project components and point out where they're to be installed, or some options for installation. If you plan to come back to the City Commission for final approval on the location. If there's anything specific, please stop me and ask. The nature-based playground was originally conceived to go in this area at the intersection of Memorial, Second, and Short Laurel. Now we're contemplating either having it next to the Ship Store, or up here in this area next to the Veterans Memorial Plaza. Again, we'll come back to the City Commission with the final plans and location for your approval.
What would be the area of the footprint of that? Do you have an approximation?
It's very scalable. I mean, originally, this project budget was somewhere just south of $100,000, but we're now including it in a $50,000 budget, among some other minor improvements. The footprint will probably be similar to that of a traditional swing set that you would see at, like Fred Green Park or Booker Park.
Thanks.
The pedestrian malls that you see on both applications, that is essentially sidewalks within the Riverfront Park. What we're wanting to do is go through and upgrade the width of the sidewalk. We're trying to complete that loop from the south to the north and back around. We want to have a nice pedestrian walkway throughout the whole Riverfront Park. The splash pad was originally designed to go here. Right now, we don't have a final location. It could be that that gets integrated into the playground area. It could be that it goes into the plaza next to the River Center. Again, we will come back to you with some options for your final approval.
And that is the interactive squirting board.
Mr. Griffith, where's the proposed sign located that you, I think you mentioned in that grant application?
Yeah, the sign that names it via J.C. Gordon Park.
Thank you, sir. I forgot that one. Right now, the entrance of the park has been designed to be at this intersection, so that sign would go as...
10-10-31. Avenue for adoption. For a little background, this is... Nation. Second. There's a motion by Commissioner Norwood. $10,000. Barbara Far is the applicant, and there again, the CRA Agency voted unanimously to recommend approval by this, of this, by the City Commission. Madam Clerk.
A resolution of the City of Palatka, Florida, awarding a business recruitment grant for 700 St. John's Avenue in an amount not to exceed $10,000. Motion to approve. Seven.
Motion by Commissioner Brandon, second by Commissioner Kitchen. Any discussion?
Question.
Question been called. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Kitchen's?
Yes.
Commissioner Leary?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes.
Approved by vote of 5 to 0. Item C is a resolution adopting the CRA CBD vacant space incentive program for adoption.
We tabled that, I believe.
And this was tabled. Okay. Our City Manager says that was not tabled. No, this was not tabled. Madam Clerk.
I guess my question would be, is this resolution that she's about to read, does it also include the amendment we made?
I think she'll read the resolution, and then I will probably vote to... Well, it was approved with the amendment.
That's right.
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 Okay. And this is for... Resolution of the City of Palatka, Florida, adopting the vacant space incentive program for the Community Redevelopment Agency's South, Central, and North Tax Improvement Districts.
The motion, my motion is to approve the recommendation from the CRA. That would include the...
Which is the amended...
That would include the...
Change in verdicts. Do you have that changed?
Yes.
I do not.
But we can get that from the CRA administration.
Motion is to approve it as amended. Any discussion?
Question.
Question been called.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second. Second by Commissioner Leary. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes. Approved by vote of 5 to 0, as amended.
We're in the public hearing section of the agenda. Item 5 is the second public hearing on the CDVG fiscal year 2013 Economic Development Application for Water Taxi Stand slash Restaurant slash Ship Stores slash Restroom Improvements. Brad Fox and Jonathan Griffith. And item A is a resolution authorizing submission of small cities CBD/CDVG application for adoption. Madam Clerk, would you read the first resolution?
A resolution authorizing the submission of an application for the small cities' community development for block grants to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for federal fiscal year 2013. Someone?
Second motion by Commissioner Brandon, second by Commissioner Leary. Mr. Fox.
First of all, the state requires, or DGO requires, to assign a sheet, so I'm going to pass that around. A couple of minor changes from what was in the advertisement newspaper. I don't want these to get on the record, please. First is that the budget's been revised slightly. The newspaper notice said that 716,970 of the grant funds will be used in the building, and that $250,000 of the grant funds will be used for the refueling facility... and that $250,000 of the grant funds will be used for the refueling facility. The city has requested that we add another $25,000 to the refueling facility, which will make it to $275,000. And that's going to reduce the amount of funds available for the restaurant to $691,970. The second item, the developer, who is PBM LLC, which y'all have been approximately issuing an agreement with. Initially, we had four jobs to be created by them and 26 jobs to be created by the restaurant. He has asked that his job could be reduced to three, which would increase the restaurant commission revenue to 27, because we need a total of 30 jobs based upon the waiver we received from DEO for the $1,49,970. Having said that, to help you give an explanation of the project, basically, the project is to build the ship store, restaurant, public restroom facility, which should also have a space for overnight butters and small lounge and a separate restroom for them with showers, and to put in the fuel farm. And the intention now is to actually have three different types of fuel available, maybe not initially, but at least to have the capacity, for one being normal gasoline, marine gasoline, the second being diesel fuel, and the third being aviation fuel in the event that we start getting some sea plates again. So the budget, as it stands now, is $691,970 of CDBG funds for the building. There's an additional approximately $270,000 out of your DOT grants available to construct the building. The refueling station is estimated at $275,000. Administration is $83,000 for a total of $1,49,970, the grant funds being requested.
How does this integrate into the terminal building?
This is the terminal building.
That is the terminal building.
Yeah, basically, you want to get into it, you want to meet into it.
Yes, sir. We have approximately $300,000 already allocated for hard and soft costs for the terminal building after the RFP solicitation and selection of Palatka Boat House Marina. And arriving at what their program would be to make it a profitable operation, we found that we did not have enough money to construct the facility necessary. So that is why we tonight asked for approval to submit an application to DEO.
So the money we have in hand will be integrated with these new funds?
Yes, sir.
For the total project?
Yes, sir.
Any questions of Mr. Fox? Do you have any?
Yeah, I have one. Financial question.
I have one. Because how many, how many square feet is the total building going to be, the restaurant and the whole facility, not just breaking it up, but the whole building, how many square feet?
We're still waiting to get the restaurateur on board, because we want to get him involved with the design of the restaurant itself. You want to know what that?
Currently, we're around 4,500 and 5,000 square feet, but it is only a target.
4,500, 5,000?
Yes. It is scalable. We have had many conversations with Mr. Legacy regarding the restaurateur. That is the one element of the program that we haven't figured out yet. It could be that it could be a little bit smaller, but we believe that 4,500, 5,000 is the max.
I just want to ballpark, figure this out. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Griffith, or Mr. Fox, I know we haven't got to that point, but I guess you might as well talk about the process, what we're here for. If the Commission approves the proposed resolutions, what would be the process in which we would go through, DEO's visit, and then the required legal documentations that we would have to execute?
Okay.
I know we've been through it several times, but just for a refresher.
And I understand that even though you're doing this tonight, we can't actually submit this application until we have the restaurateur on board and have his input and have his commitment, because he is basically the driving force of the job creation, obviously, with 27 and a third. But once we get that on board, we are trying to get in this cycle. This cycle is going to close the third, fifth, third week in January. I want to get in there as soon as we can, but that's the drop dead date. If we get in later than that, we start all this all over for next year. And there's a lot of negatives for the city in the point, in the area of reduced points. If we have to wait, the community one, he's going to reset for next year. And so basically, the points we lose from getting this will be wiped off before we're ever competing for another site. But submitting it in, about a month later, a month, a month and a half later, DEO would come out and do a site visit. About another three to four weeks later, DEO would offer you a contract. You'll have 60 days to turn back a whole bunch of stuff. Developer has to turn some stuff in. Your final lease agreement would have to be in place. The lease agreement between the developer and the sublease, visit, him and the restaurateur would need to be in place. Whatever it's going to take, and we're estimating about $100,000 to complete the restaurant to basically, we can put in all the fixed equipment with the grant. We can't do any of the fixtures, tables, finishings, things that are basically permanent, yes, but, you know, however the decor is, if the restaurateur wants more, we're estimating a $100,000 of his funds for that. And then during the 60-day period, he's going to show that he's got, he's going to show that either he's got a, took from a lender for a portion of it, and the rest from his back pocket, or all of it from his back pocket. And that's the tricky point. That's the point where most of these things fall apart, is the developers haven't thought ahead far enough and didn't realize the time it's going to take to get a full-blown bank of money. But once, once that contract goes bad and gets signed at the state level, we'll start. It's called HUD environmental review, which is totally different than the Phase Ones and Phase Twos that everybody's used to. It's basically more notifying a bunch of agencies, Indian tribes, everybody in the world that, hey, we're doing this project, and if you think you've got, you know, anything about it you want, just in your domain, you need to let us know. And any concerns you have, we'll comment to. And that's about a five to six-month process. Once that's done, the state release funds, we can then go to bid for construction. The question's been asked, can we do it as a change order to the current contract? Maybe not, we'll see if we can get it separately. Bring awards in and awarded and issued, proceed for construction, and the construction is four to six months, whatever the number is going to be.
Right. Another question?
I got two other, real quick points. So, Mr. Fox, so this is, can you explain, I know you've done it before, but this is a little bit different. On this particular grant, the city's going, it's not a, it's a, we'll just call it a reimbursable grant. So they're going to give us money to construct the building, and then there's going to be appraisal done, and then we have to pay them a predetermined amount of, a monthly amount once we have, once we have an agreement with PBM and a sub, and a restaurateur. So there'll be a monthly lease payment back to DEO for their share of the total cost of the building.
As program income. It's not, it's not a loan in the sense that you make the payment, your principal goes down, so you're basically paying back program income. So basically, we're working with DEO to, if we get, where we need to properly structure the lease, or the, that's a strong term, the arrangement or the agreement for the fuel farm, where basically, he's just operating it on your behalf, and we think we can get that as infrastructure. Why that's important is that when the grant closes out, we think it would count as infrastructure, it's forgiven, and there's no program income to be paid back on the infrastructure. However, there's no way to work around that with the restaurant building. And what we'll have to do is determine what portion of that restaurant building was paid for with the grant funds, determine what's the rental value of that by someone that's qualified to make that assessment, either an appraiser or somebody similar. And then that's the amount, not the full value of the building, just the value of the portion of the grant paid for. And then that's, that would be what you pay back in program income. Actually, if we start collecting that, I don't think we will, but while the commercial grant's going on, we could petition them, and it's not in place yet, but they're talking about it, and use that program income for that period of time with that commercial grant, or any future grants for that period of time. But there's not, this is something you're going to have to do in perpetuity. There's not a drop-dead date. We actually did this years ago for BAC, and there was a drop-dead date. I think we did it for, and we could keep it for about 20 years, and it was over. Times have changed, rules have changed, and now it's in perpetuity.
So just, I just want to make sure, it's just not an outright grant, so there's a specific difference, so we all know that. So secondly, that, that contract will come back to the City Commission, so all those details will be fully vetted. I guess that was my point. And then, secondly, obviously, we're going to be presenting that agreement between the city and Palatka Boat House Marina will define the responsibilities and the revenue sharing for, for those assets. So my, my point is, this is kind of give us the ability to apply for this grant, do all our due diligence and all these documents and contracts. If awarded, we'll come back to the City Commission with full, full vetting of all those details. That's the reason why, I'm just bringing it up.
And in a normal agreement in the past, and Don's been involved with it, we've known it's called developer's agreement, where we actually were dealing with private property, and it was all infrastructure, and we had it set up where if he defaulted, we had recourse. And you've got to make that decision somewhere down the road. You know, if the restaurateur doesn't create the jobs, I mean, are you going to, you know, hold his feet to the fire in some developer sort of way, or it's your building and you just go buy another restaurateur?
Commission.
Well, that, what you just said caused me to have another question in addition to the three I already had. If, if something happens, this is based for the only employment of 30 people, so we would have to make sure somebody stayed in there that had 30 people. Would we ever have to pay this back, or?
It's, you're basically, you have to get below $35,000 in grant funds requested for permanent full-time equivalent job creation, not just low-monter income jobs, but all the jobs that are created. At least 51% of them must be for people that were in low-monter income households in the year before they were hired.
Okay.
So 30 is a minimum. 30, we have to do 30 between the two. And if you do less than 30, say you do 28, then you're looking at something in the neighborhood of $70,000 being returned to the state. It's not all or nothing. You get some penalty points on future grants, but they'll adjust the amount that you got to pay back based upon the numbers of jobs that are created. But if this guy falls, you know, if you lose your restaurateur before the threshold is made, as soon as you meet your numbers, which meet, which basically, the restaurateur and the person that's running the other part of the facility has provided, there's a two-page form they have to have each of their employees fill out, and they have to give us a payroll roster from a moment in time of their choice, that says, all these people were employed, and we meet the numbers, and, you know, these 51% of them are low-monter income, then you've met that requirement. And the state's not going to come back again and say, you know, two years, three years from now and say, you know, how do we know you still meet that requirement? Once you meet it one time, you're done. Now, the state's going to hold the grant open for a year after all of the infrastructure and the building is completed and the CO is issued, even if the next week the job creation numbers are met. Because 35,000 is the minimum that you have to get under, or else. But the goal was 10,000, and we're not going to meet that. And so to give you an opportunity to possibly create more jobs off of that infrastructure, they're going to hold the grant open for an extra 12 months from the day to, whichever happens last, the CO for the building or the CO for the fuel farm. And then once, assuming all the job creation has been met, then we can close out.
Okay. I happened to notice it says, "Build and construction, and activities construct the restaurant portion of the taxi terminal." The original purpose of having a facility on the Riverfront was for the water taxi office. And part of the grants that we got for the water taxis were to go help go toward the terminal. Is the taxi terminal not going to be built initially, it's just going to be the restaurant building first?
It's one building. I understand it is all one building.
Okay.
Just like an out, an outhoe, you know, one side's a restaurant, the other side...
Why does it say construct the restaurant portion of the taxi terminal, restaurant building, ships, et cetera?
Because we're looking at the grant funds for the CDBG. That's where the primary number of jobs are.
For the restaurant?
But it's one big building.
Okay.
That's, as I understand it.
And getting this, applying for this grant won't cause us to not be able to apply for infrastructure grants to actually help people's water lines?
Right. But I understand that as long as this one's on time, we're fine. But you won't, the next cycle's going to be March, and because you just got the commercial grant, you can't apply for another neighborhood or commercial or housing until you've closed out the grant that you, that you actually approved tonight. Not this one, but the commercial grant.
And the final thing is, we will, we will need some type of a legal description for this building, because when it's rented out, it will become taxable. It won't be going to leave some to the city's exemption anymore.
Don to Don question.
A portion of it.
Just a portion of it.
And, Commissioner, that'll be in the rent that will charge, or that will negotiate with Mr. Legacy.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Fox? Thank you, Mr. Fox. Now, we have a motion in a second. You can explain it. I'll open the public hearing on this. If anyone in attendance would like to speak to this matter? If being none, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion in a second.
Question.
Questions, then call. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes. It's adopted by vote five to zero. Item five B is a resolution authorizing the implementation of community development long- and short-term objectives for adoption. Madam Clerk.
A resolution of the City of Palatka, authorizing the implementation of a long-term and short-term objectives of the City of Palatka Community Redevelopment Plan.
This is, I might point out, this is part of, part A.
A little different.
There's a motion by Commissioner Norwood, second by Commissioner Leary. Any questions?
Question.
Questions, then call. I'll open the public hearing on this item. Anyone in attendance would like to speak to this matter? If being none, we'll close the public hearing. Questions, then call. Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
It's adopted by vote five to zero. Item six is an ordinance adopting an additional homestead at the lower tax exemption for circumqualifying seniors, as authorized by Florida Statute 196.075. It's called the 2012 Super Senior Exemption. This is the first reading. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, amending Chapter 78 Taxation to that provision, providing additional homestead exemption for certain qualifying senior citizens, granting an additional homestead tax exemption to an owner who has maintained permanent residency on the property for not less than 25 consecutive years, who has attained to age 65, and who has a low annual household income as defined by general law, providing for transmittal, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
There's a motion by Commissioner Norwood, second by Commissioner Kitchen. We'll open the public hearing on this matter. Anyone would like to speak? If being none, we'll close the public hearing. There's a motion in a second.
Question.
Questions, then call. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yep.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
It's approved on first reading by vote five to zero. Item seven is an ordinance amending zoning code section 94-2, 94-143, and 94-156, defining original or historic use, allowing original and historic uses as conditional uses in historic districts, and providing conditional use criteria for original or historic uses. First reading. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, amending zoning code section 94-2, 94-143, and 94-156, defining original or historic use, allowing original and historic uses as a conditional uses in the historic districts, and providing conditional use criteria for original or historic uses, providing for separability and providing an effective date. Who's approved?
Second. A motion by Commissioner Kitchen, second by Commissioner Leary. Just the city manager.
Yeah, we have Mr. Crowe, the planning director, to just give a brief explanation of why this is coming before the City Commission.
Badger, badger, um, try to be very brief. This has come about because in our historic districts, we have a number, not a great number, but at least a half dozen or so that I know of, obsolescent historic properties which have single-family zoning applied to them. These buildings that I'm talking about were really constructed as multifamily or possibly neighboring commercial. There may be cases where these buildings could be reused and restored as more income-generating properties, such as limited multifamily or neighboring commercial. We just want to provide a mechanism for the planning boards to consider that these kind of requests. So it doesn't give any kind of blank approval, it just provides a way for someone to apply for that original historic use. I hope that helps.
And that goes through a conditional use permit process, is that correct, Mr. Crowe?
That is through the conditional use process.
Any questions? We'll open the public hearing on this matter. If anyone here would like to speak to this matter, please come forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Bob Taylor, 241 Crystal Cove, Palatka. Wholeheartedly endorse and support this ordinance. I think it's a great addition to what Palatka is doing for the historic buildings. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Any questions, Mr. Taylor?
Okay, we're fine, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Anyone else like to speak to the matter? We'll close the public hearing. Questions been called, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Leary?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Kitchen?
Yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes.
It's approved on the first reading by a vote of five to zero. Item 8 is an ordinance amending zoning code section 94 dash 2, dash 94 dash 149, and 94 dash 202, to define mobile medical units, allowing the use as either a permitted or conditional accessory use slash structure in the C2 Intensive Commercial Zoning District. First reading, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Polacka, Florida, providing for the definition of mobile medical units, allowing such uses in the C2 Intensive Commercial Zoning District by right or by conditional use permit, and providing criteria for conditional use review, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Move it over.
Motion for approval by Commissioner Kitchen, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir, again, Mr. Crowe, could you come up and briefly explain why this is coming before the commission? Specifically, the request, I guess, that prompted this, in answering a question that they, I think one of the commissioners has specific questions on some site plan issues for, maybe there's a specific proposal. Mr. Crowe?
Fad Crowe, the plan director, this is an enabling ordinance essentially to allow for what is called these bloodmobile-looking type vehicles, which trend, and as I understand, I'm not an expert in this, but in the medical industry, there's specialized equipment that runs at such great cost that some of these are putting, being put into mobile units, which then can go to numerous clinics within a regional vicinity. Code technically does not allow for this accessory structure, as it does not for food trucks, for example, and the whole idea of mobile vending has been a big no-no in the city for a long time. So we propose, once again, to allow a mechanism to apply for this kind of accessory structure, which is a large type of vehicle, as I said. There are specific criteria associated with this. I'm a little reluctant to answer specific questions on a particular site, however, you know, we do have a real-life situation, and the applicants are going before the planning board at the November planning board meeting for this use. So it might help for illustrative purposes if you care to ask any questions about that. Mr. Holmes?
This has to do with something like a CAT scan or an MRI unit, and I think these are, well, I know they use them out at the oncology center, at the cancer center.
Which would be more of a typical accessory use associated with a hospital. It's a little bit different than that.
Right, okay, but of the same format.
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I originally had a question, but Fad has answered it, the planning board is working out, but I do have another question. You said that mobile vendors are prohibited in the city?
I'm sorry, I meant roadside vendors.
There you go.
That was a slip.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
They're not dispensing medicine, are they? They, I mean, do they, they just doing x-rays and scans?
It's, it's an accessory function to a medical clinic, and they may be doing other things in the medical clinic, then they actually, the applicant have very specific, they can answer your specific questions if you'd like.
Okay, it's just...
Any other questions?
Question?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll open the public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak?
I can answer some of those, the questions about the medicine.
Well, we don't have any questions.
You don't have any questions, okay.
We'll close the public hearing.
Question?
Questions been called, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Kitchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Leary?
Yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes.
It's approved at the first reading by a vote of five to zero. Item 9 is an ordinance establishing regulations for decontamination of illegal drug manufacturing sites, second reading for adoption. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Polacka, Florida, amending Chapter 18, Article 10 of the Code of Ordinances to establish regulations for the decontamination of illegal drug manufacturing sites, creating definitions, provisions for the determination of property as being unsafe because of use as an illegal drug manufacturing site, establishing procedures for owners of such properties, procedures for assessment, decontamination, sampling, and testing, providing for the disposal of unsafe contents, providing for the destruction of unsafe properties, requiring disclosure of the sale or transfer of such properties, setting forth regulations for licensing and regulation of drug laboratory decontamination contractors, including provisions for the denial, suspension, and replication of drug laboratory decontamination contractor licenses, providing for the assessment of fines and fees, and amending Appendix A fee schedule of the Code of Ordinances to insert fines and fees pertaining to this section, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Some move? There's a motion by Commissioner Norwood, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Is there any questions? We'll open the public hearing on this matter. If anyone in attendance would like to speak? There being none, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second.
Question?
Questions been called, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Kitchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Leary?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes.
It's adopted by vote of five to zero. Item 10 is an ordinance establishing local regulations for the manufacture and sale of synthetic drugs, second reading for adoption. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Polacka, Florida prohibiting the possession, sale, or manufacture of synthetic drugs, providing a statement of intent, providing for a title, definitions, determination of a product which constitutes a synthetic drug, prohibited acts, laboratory analysis, enforcement, and penalties, providing for conflicts of law, providing for separability, codification, and providing an effective date.
Move it over.
Second. There's a motion by Commissioner Kitchen, seconded by Commissioner Leary. We'll open the public hearing on this. If anyone in attendance would like to speak? There being none, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second.
Question?
Questions been called, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Kitchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Leary?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes.
It's adopted by vote of five to zero. City Manager and Administrator reports. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir, I have five quick things. I think at the last meeting, I reported that the mayor and I were going to attend the last Board of County Commissioners meeting to speak about our request for the county's financial participation in the Southern Riverfront Improvement Project. That was delayed. We've had some further discussions and negotiations with the county, and we're going to be there on this Tuesday, and we are anticipating some financial participation with our county counterparts. I think that's 9:00 AM. So we plan on being there, and we're very optimistic that we're going to receive some financial participation on our projects, so we're very happy about that. Secondly, we had a meeting this week with the Florida Department Environmental Protection officials up in Jacksonville. We met with them specifically about our sludge, our wastewater treatment plant sludge processing improvements, so they were very helpful. I was surprised that the district director was there, so they were very cooperative and gave us all kinds of suggestions and support of our project, so we're very good to have that meeting with our VEP officials. Thirdly, Saturday, I believe at 8:00 AM, we are undertaking our first Polacka Pride cleanups. We have two lots, one's on 10th and Madison, one's on 10th and Main, so if anybody, or everybody's interested in helping out on that, that would be 8:00 AM. We're looking forward to cleaning up those particular projects. That's a good thing. Next Tuesday at 11:00 AM, there's St. John's River Center Groundbreak down at the Riverfront, so we're looking forward to that. So it's Tuesday at 11:00 AM. Everyone is invited. That's a very good project that we're looking forward to moving forward. And then the only last thing I have is, hopefully everybody has a safe and happy Halloween. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mr. Crowe, do you have anything, sir?
No, sir.
Mr. Rudd?
Cruisin' Saturday night, Halloween party at 12:00.
Yeah, I will say one thing, Cruisin', we had last Friday, third Friday, entertainment, we had four class reunions, and we had about 150 paddlers in town from all over the state, and it was a great set, we had a lot of positive comments, but we had, I guess more importantly, we had a big, big crowd and a lot of enthusiasm and activity. Steve Gadsden? Gadsden?
No, sir.
Commissioner?
I just want to remind everybody that early voting started today, October the 23rd, and it will end on Saturday, November 1st, and general election day is November 1st. I urge everybody to exercise your right as American citizens and go out and vote.
Commissioner Brown?
Congressman Corrine Brown will be here tomorrow morning at 9:00 at Price Martin, and she is bringing Donna Brazil, CNN political correspondent with her.